Waycross presents an election forum for the Wintonwood City Schools Board of Education. There are six candidates running for three open seats. The candidates are, in alphabetical order, Deborah Denise Bryant, Savan C. Gibson, Sr., Viola E. Johnson, Brandon J. Smith, Ed Stadnik, Aaron E. Washington Childs. There are also two candidates running for one open seat for an unexpired term ending 12/31/2023. The candidates are Jeff Burdy, DeMarco R. Kennamore.
Welcome to another Waycross Election Forum. This forum is for Wintonwood School District Board of Education member. I'm Dana Gagnon, Government Programming Coordinator at Waycross Community Media. And we have five candidates here in our studio. We have Deborah Denise Bryant. We have Savan C. Gibson, Sr. We have Viola E. Johnson, and Ed Stadnik, and Aaron Washington Childs. Thank you all for being here in the studio with us. You're willing to be part of this process to help the public connect to those names that are going to be on their ballot when they go to vote. Now, Mr. Jeff Burdy, DeMarco Kennamore, and Brandon Smith were invited to participate, but they did not respond. Now, we're going to start with each candidate's two-minute opening statement. But before we do that, I would like to take a minute to say if you are watching this program live on October 14th, you can be part of the process. You can email me your questions for the candidates to live@waycross.org, and I will get them here in the studio on this magical device, and I will be able to ask the candidates your questions so you can be ready to vote on November 2nd. Now, there are some rules for those questions. So if you're watching live again on October 14th, these are the rules for questions that you email in. One is that you must be a resident of the Wintonwood School District to ask a question. So when you send a question, please include your name and include your address. Now, we're not going to say your last name or your address on the air, but this is just so that we can make sure that the questions we ask the Wintonwood School Board candidates are really from people that live in the Wintonwood School District. Questions must be phrased for all the candidates, not targeted at one specific candidate. Okay, so now that we've covered all that, let's start with our two-minute opening statements, and we will start with you, Ms. Bryant.
Thank you very much. My name is Deborah Denise Bryant. I am a 19-year resident of the Wintonwood City School District. I have three children that graduate from the district. I'm actively involved in the community. I'm a member of the We Thrive Committee, and I've also been a former member of Wintonwood's Community Coalition that was located in Green Hills. I love the community, and by profession, I am a registered nurse for the last 29 years. I believe that education is the most important thing we can give our children, and that starts with having a school board and a community that's healthy and ready for engaged learning. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And now, Mr. Gibson, you are next.
Hello, my name is Savan Gibson, Sr. I'm a husband and father of three. I have two children in the school, in the school district, a fourth grader and a sixth grader. I'm a financial planner. I have 12 years of experience in the financial industry. I've also sat on multiple boards throughout the city of Cincinnati, including the Tauber House Fatherhood Committee, the United Ways Board Steering Committee, just to name a few. I've also assisted in multiple outreach programs throughout the city with educating over 500 families in financial literacy through my business, Gibson Financial Planning. I've also been a facilitator for the Mortar Entrepreneurship Academy with Forest Park's first cohort. And I'm a member of the community for the past eight years, and I have a future in Forest Park, and I feel that, I feel that the school board and the future of Forest Park is what's important for our children and our communities.
Excellent, thank you. And Dr. Johnson, you are next.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Dr. Viola Johnson, and I'm currently a member of the Wintonwood City School Board of Education, and I'm seeking reelection. My husband of over 35 years and I have lived in Wintonwood City School District since 1986. And throughout the past years, we've had four graduates from the Wintonwood City Schools, three who received full scholarships at universities in Ohio. I have a bachelor's degree in business education and a master's degree in deaf studies, and my doctoral degree is in educational leadership. And I'm currently a professor at Cincinnati State where I have worked for the past 30 years. For the past eight years, I've served as a member of the Wintonwood City School Board of Education. I've had the privilege of being instrumental in executing some significant changes in the district. Eight years ago, I campaigned on the promise that I would fight for the district policy to improve academic quality, encourage community engagement, and establish financial stability for years to come. Once I joined the board, it was with immediate effort. I used my time to do what the voters asked me to do. We moved the GPAs for the athletes from 1.0 of the state's requirement to 2.5. We set up ACT and SAT prep. We have kindergarten from all day for kindergarten and preschool. We built two new buildings, Financial Security, we built two new buildings, K-6 in Green Hills, 7-12 in Forest Park. I'd like to have the opportunity to work toward the future generations of the Wintonwood City School District for our foundation. As an educator, as an active volunteer, and a longtime resident, I understand how higher academic expectations and curriculum enhancements can be a direct influence on improving our students and educating them in the district. So, that's me.
Thank you. Mr. Stadnik?
Yes, hello. My name is Ed Stadnik. I've been a resident of Forest Park since 1981 for most of those years. Since joining, since moving to Forest Park, I've served on several commissions, the Civil Service Commission for 20 years, of which nine of them, I was the chairperson. Since 2012, I've served on the Economic Development Commission, and for the last five years, I've been on, I've been the chairperson of that commission. I've been active in many other Green Hills, Forest Park activities. My first involvement with the school board was being a realtor with Keller Williams. I was trying to sell houses in Forest Park. I met with Dr. Smith, he was newly named the superintendent, and I told him of those difficulties because my prospects, for the most part, wanted to buy houses in the Princeton School District because our district was failing the state report card. I asked about that report card, and I was starting to learn some things about it. I don't understand why we've failed for the last eight years some of our grades on the report card. So, I wanted to learn more, and I signed to teach in three school districts, Princeton, Northwest, and Wintonwood. I've taught mostly in Wintonwood's at the intermediate, middle, and junior high school. The last three years, I've learned quite a bit about the goods and the bads of our school district. I have some ideas that I think if implemented will help us pass the state report card. I think we need to better communicate it with our citizens and taxpayers, and I intend to do that while cooperating with the school board, teachers, parents, and students. I hope that you'll vote for me on November 2nd. Thank you very much.
Okay, great, thank you. And Mr. Washington Childs?
Good evening. My name is Aaron Washington Childs. I've been a resident of Forest Park for a total of 20 years, and I currently reside in Forest Park with my wife, Matilda. I'm running for the school board because education is the most important thing that, and most important service that the government provides to our citizens. And your mind is the most important asset that you have for a successful life. And unfortunately, Wintonwood's hasn't lived up to the expectations necessary to fulfill that promise to our children and to our property owners and our taxpayers. So I'm running to address that, and I feel I'm well-qualified to do so. I hold a bachelor's degree in international studies from Morehouse College, and I hold a Juris Doctorate from the Case Western Reserve University School of Law. For the past three years, I've practiced law in New York City, and I've currently moved back to Cincinnati and opened up my own law firm as a solo practitioner practicing in litigation-based disputes and cases. I'm running here today because I want to make a difference in the community, and I feel I'm going to be a pillar in the community for many years to come. And I look forward to Election Day and look forward to tonight's program.
Okay, thank you. So now that we have taken a minute for a quick introduction, we have already had a lot of participation from the community. We have questions, and I appreciate that. If you are watching this program live on October 14th, you can also email me your questions for the candidates and the student, and the studio here. Just send them to live@waycross.org, and they will come to me magically in the studio on this device, and just make sure they're aimed at all candidates. Include your name, include what community you're in, so we know it's really coming from the Wintonwood School District. Now, I would like to start with, actually, I have a really quick question here from Pat in the school district. And her question has to do with qualifications, background, and goals, and are they posted somewhere? And it occurs to me, just with rapid fire, just going to be a quick answer, and we will start with you, Mr. Gibson. Do you have a spot that people can look up more information about you? Anything that we don't cover this evening?
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead.
You can go to my website, www.savan gibson senior dot com. And you'll find everything.
Excellent. Dr. Johnson?
Actually, I've been on the board for eight years, so if you just Google my name, a lot of stuff will come up for what I've been involved in. And so that's pretty much how you could find me.
Excellent. Dr. Stad? Mr. Stad?
I don't have a website, but as I mentioned in my introduction, I believe we need to improve the communications with the residents and the taxpayers. So I have an email, edwardstadnik@verizon.net, that anyone can email me any questions, they want to find out anymore about me, they can do that.
Excellent. Mr. Washington Childs?
I believe that was a two-part question. It's the first, the qualifications. In addition to the background that I mentioned as far as my degrees, I've also had two years of teaching experience, including one year of teaching experience at the middle school for Wintonwood's as the building sub, and that was in the 2018-2019 school year. And for more information about my campaign and my background, you can go to awc-the number four warrior b o e dot com.
Excellent. And Ms. Bryant?
I'm going to kind of piggyback on that for qualifications. I possess a bachelor's degree in nursing, as well as a master's in nursing administration, and I'm currently pursuing my doctorate in educational leadership. I do not currently have a website, but I'll be happy to provide my email address so people can contact me, and I can send my flyer to them.
That's great. So, thank you very much. That was just a quick rapid fire, but that was a question that somebody had, and we're not going to get to every single thing. So that gives everyone, as you're getting ready to vote, make sure you look at all those names and find out what you need to know about each person. But we'll see if we, we'll cover a lot of stuff in here today. The first thing I want to ask from my own list is, and this will be two minutes, what do you think are the top two issues facing the school district today? Now, with two minutes, you have to boil it down a little bit, but we will start with you, Dr. Johnson.
I would say that right now, what we're trying to do is to figure out how we reform because we moved into two buildings as opposed to the six buildings that we had. So that caused a lot of issues with transportation. We restored busing to all of the students in the district that live within a mile. But one of the major things that we're facing right now is, you know, trying to just figure out how that restructuring looks as far as the buses and the flow of the traffic. Because people didn't anticipate 7-12, what that traffic was going to look like, and then what the traffic looks like in Green Hills for the K-6. So that's one issue. The other issue is because of the pandemic, we've kind of created a whole lot of other issues with students and how many times they've missed school, and they've gotten behind. And I've heard some things about test scores. We were in what they call safe harbor up until 2019, which means our test scores were not being held, you know, judged against us. And then 2020, we were out, 2021, we were out, so no one's test scores. So I think that that's the other issue that we have to, you know, wrap our mind around. And we did make a lot of changes during the school years that we had. We were in safe harbor to improve our scores. So, we've had, we've done that. So, that was what, those are the two I would say.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Stadnik?
Yes, the top two issues as I see them. Number one, if we were a factory, we would be putting out a product. We're a school, and our product is students. And the state report card still has us failing the state measures. So I think that's the main thing, is to get the students better educated so that we pass the report card. The second issue is to regain the trust and credence of the, of the parents, teachers, residents, taxpayers, in what the school board is doing. I hear a lot of negativity about, we don't know what they're teaching, we don't, you know, we don't think we should be throwing more money at the schools when the product is still failing the state system. So I think those are the main two issues. And I think communications will help bridge that gap in the trust with the taxpayers, parents, and residents. So, I may have mentioned that my intent was to do a monthly report card or a letter to email to the, to the residents of the school district, letting them know what's going on. Because it's a lot of problems sometimes for people to go to Waycross and find in the archives, the school board meeting from last month. People are very busy, some of them working two jobs, that they can't sit down the night of the school board meeting and watch. So I would like to better communicate with the residents and taxpayers. The other thing is, I said I know the good and the bad of the interior of the school. I think we can improve some things in-house. And by the way, just as an addition, I also have a degree, a Bachelor of Science degree from Duquesne University in Business and Administration. 2007, magna cum laude. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. And Mr. Washington Childs?
The number one issue as I see it is the lack of transparency and trust from the administration in the school. Over the past two months, I've been running a grassroots campaign, going door-to-door, talking to people, asking their questions and fielding their concerns, and the number one issue consistently has been the lack of trust from the administration in the school board. And that includes the superintendent and the principal of the high school. Some of the stories that I heard communicated to me were just atrocious. And the lack of respect that has been communicated to the community at large is very disheartening. So that's my number one issue. And number two, I would say, is the academic expectations in the school district. I believe Ms. Johnson said that previously, for instance, the GPA requirement for an athlete to participate in Wintonwood's sports was only a 1.0, and they recently moved it up to a 2.5. That's ridiculous, and the expectations are way too low. We have to try to boost and set higher expectations for children because children will rise to a level of expectation that's set for them. And that also means that we need to reach out to the community and reach out to the parents because school starts in the home. And if we can build a collaborative that invites parents to participate in the educational process, then we can bear the school district.
Excellent, thank you. And Ms. Bryant?
Thank you. So as I say, all of the candidates so far have expressed great concerns. And one of the other concerns is safety of the students. How do we keep our students safe? How do we keep them psychologically safe? How do we keep them safe from physical things with the pandemic? How do we keep the community engaged is the second one. You said that, Aaron, that you mentioned that as you're going around talking to parents, they've given you these stories. I've heard some of the same stories. But are these same parents going to school board meetings and discussing these concerns with the school board where the change can be had and made? So how do you get parents from outside of their homes, inside of the school board, inside of the schools, to be actively engaged to change the trajectory for their students? Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Gibson?
Yes, as others have stated, I do believe that the top focuses should be outcome and transparency. We do need to search the root of the issue as far as the school report card and collectively figure out with the children, parents, staff, how do we raise those scores? What do those scores look like? How, how do we communicate with other districts who in the past might have had lower scores, but scores have improved over the years? What can we implement to improve those scores? And transparency, just working together with the community of Green Hills and Forest Park, the school board, the PTA, the city council, how can we come together as a collective community to build out a communication that works for everyone? Be it digital, be it meetings, be it visual, however, it works for everybody so that everyone's on one accord.
Excellent, thank you. I want to follow up. I'm seeing in some of my emails, and I'm hearing a lot from you, from all of you, the words transparency and improved communication. They kind of go together, just different ways of saying that. I would like to take one minute each and see if each of you has some specific ways that they would like to see that happen. Because of course, we all say, we need more transparency, we need better communication. So just a quick one-minute answer. We will start with you, Mr. Stadnik.
Well, as I said, I believe in setting up an email communications with all the residents, taxpayers of our school district. Like the other folks walking the campaign trail, I've heard a lot of that stories about the school, the distrust of the board and the superintendent, and some of the bad things that happened in our school. I can tell you, there's many good things that are happening in our school, but having taught there the last three years, I can identify with some of the bad things too. And I think we need to, at sidebar sessions with the school board, address those bad things. I don't believe in washing our dirty laundry out in the open, but I think we need to talk as a school board, how we remedy those bad things that are happening. So communications, transparency, I'm all for that. And again, for the last three years, teaching in the school district, I have lived some of those bad happenings, I've not just heard about them. Thank you very much.
Okay, excellent. Mr. Washington Childs, how would you improve it?
I would start by utilizing time more effectively. For instance, with the recent levy that is on the ballot this November, I believe that the district itself only published its backing and reasoning for the levy about three weeks prior to Election Day. It doesn't give people enough time to be able to know the specifics and decide on the issues. I'd also like to utilize social media more and have some organized events in the community, whether that is going door-to-door, like I've been doing, knocking on doors and having volunteers do that, or just have events to invite people out so they can get engaged in something fun to bring them into the fold. And lastly, I think one of the things that could be used to greatly improve transparency and trust and communication would be to answer people's questions when they go to the school board meetings. People take time out of their days to go and schedule time to come out and ask questions. And I've been in a few meetings myself, and unfortunately, people ask questions, and then those questions go unanswered, or it takes over a month for them to actually get a response. So those would be my ways to address that.
Thank you. Ms. Bryant?
So I believe that improved communication also starts with relationships. So to kind of piggyback, making sure that you're seen, that you're out in the community, face-to-face, Zoom meetings, really engaging with community members. Because not only if they come to the school board, do you want to answer their questions, you also want to be seen. So if you're in the community, people can come up to you, ask those questions, make, and know that you care about what's going on in the school district. And then holding people accountable, whether it's the superintendent or the principals, holding them accountable for that follow-up. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And Mr. Gibson?
Yes, thanks for asking. I think one way that we can improve transparency is through a digital dashboard. A lot of the community members have the same questions. So if we had a dashboard digitally where we have frequently asked questions, where these questions might already be answered, and you don't have to wait till the board meeting. We can also provide surveys on this dashboard where the community could answer certain questions, and that way it gives us feedback on where we need to improve. What are some issues that might not be brought to the school board that we might not know? And that way, we can address these issues, and it's all out in a platform that's open to the public.
Great, thank you. Dr. Johnson?
Thank you. First, your question was how will we improve communication? And over the last eight years, I feel like we have done some things to improve communication. When I came on the board, we didn't have a community engagement coordinator, and that was one of the things we did. We hired a community engagement coordinator, Mrs. Denny, and we have beefed up the website, the Wintonwood's website. Also, we do the forums here at Waycross. We do podcasts. There are multiple different ways that they communicate. They, I heard somebody say about the board meetings, there's a three-minute open slot for public comments. We don't answer public comments right then because it's not appropriate to do so. So we usually go back when we meet, we come back with those answers. But Mrs. Denny would have the answer to those questions because we meet, and she would have the answer to those. But I think that we've done a lot to improve communication, and anytime you have anything, it can always get better. So, social media is another way that we use, but everything is always evolving, and we're always trying to improve. So, thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much, because I heard a lot of very specific options there. So I'll look forward to seeing all of these come into action. The next question I want to ask has come in from more than one person. I saw it from Dave, I saw it from Nico, I'm pretty sure it's in a few more. And that is, and of course, we'll start with Mr. Washington Childs, and you will all have two minutes to answer this question. The next question has to be, what is your stand on the upcoming school levy? Are you for or against it? You have two minutes, and we'll start with you.
I'm against the levy, and I've published my stance as being against the levy on my website. It's been up there for, I think, two weeks. I believe that the levy idea, like I said previously, that there's been a lack of transparency explaining what is actually needed in the levy. And then when the levy responds and what the reasoning behind the levy was actually published, some of the things in there, I felt were unnecessary. For instance, raising money for additional resource officers, I feel like is a problem. As many of our listeners probably know about, the school-to-prison pipeline is a real reality. And increasing the presence of resource officers in the school district, especially a majority African-American school district, would work against that and make it worse. And I would rather see that money used to something like people who are psychologists, psychologists, or court people that are counselors in the school, which do a lot of work already and are overworked and need more resources. I also think that the idea that we need $3.2 or $3 million over the next five years is not necessarily true because there can be things that are taken out of that budget. For instance, the resource officers, and the expansion of the preschool village, which I read online, also includes expansion of dental and medical care for students. I believe that is the role of the parents and insurance companies and not the people in the school district. I believe that we can cut spending, and I believe that we can use the buildings that we have in real estate transactions to be able to fund the schools. And if necessary, I believe that we can use furlough days to save money rather than to lay off people, which was a threat that I believe was idle, published on the school website. For those reasons, I'm against it. And if people want more information about my complete stances, they can go to my website. I have a stance about the tax levy and a stance about my solutions to the tax levy, if it were not to pass as well.
Okay, great, thank you. Ms. Bryant?
So I have a completely, I am for the levy for some of the same reasons that Mr. Aaron Childs, Washington Childs, said that he is against it. One, I do agree that although health for children is part of insurance companies and parents, it is also part of a community. If our children are not healthy, if they cannot see, if they cannot get good nutrition, they're not going to be able to learn. So although that may not seem that it fits in the levy, as a community that wraps its arms around children, that is the place for this to be so we can have our children learning, hearing, seeing, and growing in the ways that they're supposed to grow. In terms of having officers, resource officers, having many friends that are police officers, the resource officer is not there to be a punitive or to encourage the school-to-prison pipeline, but to serve as a reminder of, here's what happens if community standards aren't upheld, and to also teach children that police officers are not bad, that they do have a reason in the community, and to help them grow in that way as well. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. And Mr. Gibson?
Yes, I'm for the levy for multiple reasons. One, I believe we have to understand that the priority here is the children. And to lose staff, to not have enough resource officers will impact our children and their future. We also have to take away the negative connotation towards resource officers. Unfortunately, there has been issues at schools throughout the nation to where there's been gun violence. So how about we look at the resource officers as a safety protocol to keep our kids protected, you know? And also as a resource for our kids, because sometimes these resource officers become mentors to the kids as well. So I am for the levy, and I'm for the levy because it's going to help build out our school, help improve our students, help improve their health and mental well-being. So I'm for it.
Thank you. Dr. Johnson?
Yes, I am, of course, for the levy. There are a lot of reasons why we need the levy. It's an operating levy, not a bond levy. Monies are, when you get on the school board, you'll see that monies are stipulated to go into certain pockets, and you can't use them for any and you can't use them for anything else. And we went from having one school building to combining, and we have a, over a 300,000-square-foot building. Two resource officers is not enough, and that's what we have right now. And I think that it's already been stated, we need to change the, how we look at the resource officers. They're not there to be punitive, they're there to support and make sure that the foundation and that the rules and that the things that enhance learning go right along with it. There might be some students that are interested in becoming police officers. So, you know, we don't know. So the other thing is the preschool village that we're looking at. The foundation starts in the beginning, and if you can build a good, strong foundation, we have seen the improvement in our first, second, and third graders who have gone to school all day, as opposed to being at home with their grandma or at a babysitter. So the foundation of having that preschool village is really important to the foundation of academics overall as we move forward. So for those reasons, but the thing is, the other thing is, this is a renewal levy. It's not a brand-new levy. We already have this levy. What we're saying is, yes, we want to keep it and continue on with it. And we restored buses because we were able to combine the schools, and they're going in the same direction. So if we don't have the levy, we might lose buses again. And that's not a threat, that's a reality. You know, once you look at the budget and see where the money is going and how it has to be spent, then you would understand that that's the reason why we need the new operating levy. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Stadnik?
The school levy. I wish that I could say that I was for the school levy. But I'm sorry to say that I cannot support it at this time. Some of the reasons. I was told when we passed the first school levy, if we passed it, and I voted for it, that we would pass the state report card. I believe it's been four or five years since the first levy, and we're still failing the state report card. Most of the people on this board are very articulate and eloquent speakers. I am not. Mrs. Johnson, her husband works on the Economic Development Committee with me, and he heard me say oftentimes, "I like doers." I'm not a talker person, I like to get things done. I think common sense and a good background, and I think I have a working man's PhD. I've done a variety of jobs in my life. I've also been certified as a project manager by George Washington University. I believe that there are many ways to do good things. And I don't know that we've narrowed in on all those many ways over the past three years. Someone mentioned about Green Hills and Forest Park, talking to the residents here about the trust and so forth. We have to remember that a large amount of our tax base comes from Springfield Township. And those residents down there have not been for the school district tax funds. And the reason is, they don't feel they're getting a quality education, a good bang for their buck here. So Springfield Township is an important part of this vote, so we have to address them as well. I think, again, if you have any additional questions, email me at edwardstadnik@horizon.net. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Now, we have managed to answer some questions from Nico, and from Pat, and from Dave and Tina. So that means if you are watching this live on October 14th, you can email your questions to me here in the studio, and I will ask them to our candidates so that you can be ready to vote. We are probably going to wind up with more questions than we have time, but we're going to get as many of them in as we can. And I do want to take a minute to say, thank you so much for addressing the school resource officers and all of the details that you added. There was a question about that sent in by Aversa, who is a recent graduate, she points out. So I wanted to make sure that she knew. Thank you for that question, and I think we covered it. I would like to, next, we are going to come back and start with you again, Ms. Bryant. I would like to next ask about busing. Busing came up, because we're talking about with levy. Busing is a crisis right now in every single district in at least the state. What solutions do you propose for that?
That's a really good question.
And we'll make that a two-minute statement.
Thank you for that question. Busing is a big issue. When my children were in school in the district, we lived too close. So we had, they had to walk to the high school, and they had busing to the junior high school. One of the solutions is to look at, what are the community resources? Do we have citizens who live in Springfield Township, Green Hills, Forest Park, parts of the Wyoming area that are part of the school district, that maybe can provide some private transportation, linking people up? Back in the day, when people didn't have internet, you relied on your neighbors and friends. So building that sense of community to help if busing isn't available. Also, looking at other ways. Are there busing companies that can offer transportation at a lower cost? What does that look like for our students? Because we want them to be safe. We want them to have a safe walkway to school and busing route to school. So I just think just listening to the community, what would they like to see as well? Having those community forums to find out what the real issues are. Is it because your student isn't getting home until 5:00 in the evening, and they're supposed to be home at 4:00, or getting home after dark, and there's no communication? So that's what I would think.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Gibson?
First, I would like to say that at the beginning of the school year, busing was, it was horrible. But it did improve within two to three weeks, I saw drastic improvement. My two children and neighbors ride the bus. So I have seen improvement in the, in the transportation system. Some ways we can address it moving forward is, let's look at staffing. You know, let's get down to the root of the issue, because employment is down everywhere across the nation. So we can't just say that this is a Winton Woods-only issue, it's a national issue. You know, so how do we find solutions for that? I believe the unemployment rate in our area is around 4%. So could we hold job fairs? Could we look for candidates within our community, Springfield Township, Green Hills, Forest Park, that might be looking for employment? What does that look like? Could we hold job fairs at the end of the school year for transportation the next school year? That way, we have this situation already handled. Could we look at hiring an inside logistics company? Someone to look at the situation and see, hey, could we find a more efficient way to run this operation?
Excellent, thank you. Dr. Johnson?
Thank you. The solution for busing, as he has stated, that it's a problem across every school district. Everywhere you go, there's a now-hiring sign for bus drivers. One, you got to understand that bus drivers only work part-time, because they drive in the morning, not in the afternoon, and then they drive in the evening or afternoon. But the solution, what we have decided to do in our district is to keep our buses in-house, so that our bus drivers are people who we hire who care for our children. We didn't want to go to a private company like First Student or some of the other private companies that don't have a connection. We wanted to stay connected. We want our parents to be connected, we want our kids to be connected. So for, as far as solutions, we do job fairs for bus drivers, and we do hold it at the end of the school year, we have it at the beginning of the school year, we have one in the middle of the school year. It's kind of something that never dies. We always are looking for bus drivers. The other thing is that, as someone else has mentioned, is the sense of community. The community of fairness says that everybody can be able to get to school as, you know, safely as possible. And we, the state rule or the law is, from the Ohio Revised Code, is if a person lives within a mile of the school, then they should have to walk. Now, unless they have to cross a major intersection. If they have to cross a major intersection, then they, you know, can have bus service. But busing is an issue. It was an issue because we didn't, they didn't anticipate what it was going to look like at the beginning of the school year, but it has gotten better, and we're always looking to improve as we evolve. You know, we hear from parents. The thing is, if we don't hear from anybody, we don't know, you know? But when you hear about a situation or problem, and that's what the school board does, it resolves issues and problems and comes up with policies. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Stadnik?
Yes, busing. When I said before, I wish that I could say I'm voting for the levy, because we have some needs. Busing was one of the things I was thinking of. However, I'm a little more confused by it now than I was when we started, because I think I heard someone say that if you live within a mile, you could get bused.
Bused.
It's the opposite?
Yes.
Further than a mile?
Right.
Okay, that clarifies that.
Yes, yes.
The other thing that was just mentioned, unless, even if you live closer than a mile, if you have a major intersection, you can get bused. I don't know of many students within the mile that don't have a major intersection to go across. So I think there would be a lot of exemptions from that rule. I believe in good busing, safe busing. I'm glad I was wrong about my interpretation, because when I was growing up, they started the busing, and you had to live further than a mile to get bused. If you lived within that mile, you couldn't get bused. And I thought, well, they have to pass our place anyhow, you know? Why can't we get bused also? So at any rate, I would hope that we can attract. The other thing I'd like to find out more facts on is, why are we short bus drivers? Is it because there's no one applying? Is it because of the money? Is it because we haven't put out a good hiring endeavor? What are the reasons for it? And then when we find out what those reasons are, then we should address those reasons. I think that's all I have on that.
Okay, great. Mr. Washington Childs?
I would like to start by saying, of course, the return of busing to the school district has been a great thing, and it's something that's worth trying to exhaust every effort to keep, and that's whether the levy passes or not. And I would like to see, I heard a lot of people talk about people in the community. I believe Mr. Gibson said that the unemployment rate was 4%, and I heard multiple people mention job fairs to hire people to be drivers. I think the issue that we're experiencing with the lack of bus drivers and the lack of employment in a lot of sectors around the country is, number one, the barrier to entry. So with the lack of bus drivers in our district, it would be nice if we could have an initiative to help people get their CDL license, so they could have the ability to drive a bus. And whether that meant looking for grants or restructuring our funding and reallocating resources to be able to assist them and making sure that we help pay for their license, that they can be hired, I think we would see an increase in people who will be interested in employment with our district. I also believe that with all the vacant school buildings that were former elementary schools, that we could use those as a staging resource, to stage buses in more convenient locations, to be able to get people access to buses quicker and more conveniently. And I believe we probably should look at restructuring bus routes and having some common sense solutions when it comes to bus routes, because during my graduate's campaign, talking to people, I've heard a couple of people say that some students who lived on the same district were riding different buses, I mean, same streets, were riding different buses. And that didn't make much sense. So I think if we restructure the plan on how we're actually utilizing the buses that we already have, that will also improve our access to transportation.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, and I think I'm keeping track. I think we got everyone on that one. And I, we had another question come in about buses, I think shortly before I even asked that one. So thank you so much for sending your questions, if you're watching live on October 14th. We're actually getting closer to the end. I want to ask one more two-minute question. We'll start with you, Mr. Gibson. And it's just because I'm hearing a lot, one of the things I'm seeing a lot here is, Winton Woods School District, you serve 3,000 to 4,000 students. So how do you, as a school board, balance being responsible for their safety with concerns from parents? And of course, this relates to, we're so sick, we're so sick of talking about COVID. But unfortunately, it's still in our world, and it's still something, you know, we're responsible for being aware of. So that's something, as a board member, that folks would like to hear your answer on.
Yes, thanks for the question. I believe Winton Woods has done a tremendous job with responding to COVID. Just the access to the Chromebooks last year, or the year, the school year before last, when it hit nationally and things were shut down, they responded immediately and distributed the Chromebooks. That whole system, I believe, has been working fluently. Like I said, I have a fourth grader and a sixth grader. Of course, as a parent, I understand that everyone can't work from home, even though their children's might be at home at times. But I believe that we continue doing what we have been doing. I haven't heard of any cases that have went up, numbers going up. And when the numbers do go up, they have been transparent in communicating that with the parents in the district. And last year, we went back for a couple of days, and then when the numbers spiked, they sent the kids back home. So I just think we continue doing what we've been doing, and we've been keeping our kids safe with sanitizing and wearing the mask and things of that nature.
Okay, great, thank you. Dr. Johnson?
As far as safety in the pandemic and during the COVID season, our custodial staff has been trained on how to properly clean and sanitize, not just the normal cleaning, but with the cleaning solutions to clean and sanitize the building. And so that's really important, and the bathrooms and everything. But the other thing is that, that the parents and the students play a role in being responsible. And part of that was, everybody wears a mask. And we don't have one on today, but in the school building, everyone wears a mask. And what it does is, it just protects you, it keeps what you have to yourself. And when we did go back, and as he stated, and the football players tried to get, and they were taking their temperatures and checking, 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 and we still had a very high number of, you know, people who were exposed or came down with COVID. So we had to rethink how we did that, and how we clean and sanitize even the locker rooms where the athletes were. So I think that the school has done a good job. What we have had is, even people, when we went into the pandemic, who were doing private school for their kids, because they found out Winton Woods was giving one-on-one technology, which we've always had since we started project-based learning, they started coming back, because they're like, we're not paying for private school for us to teach our kids at home. So we're in the district, we want to come back. And because they have an address in the district, we had to let them come back and give them a Chromebook or whatever, the computer that they had available for them. But we've always had one-on-one technology. Our treasurer does a really good job, our superintendent does a really good job of keeping their finger on the pulse of what is needed to make sure that the students have what they need, even working to get internet for those students who don't have internet. So I think we've done a good job, in that, I think we've done a good job. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Mr. Stadnik?
Is the question limited, limited to COVID, the safety of the students with COVID?
That's the main focus, but it's in general, being responsible and safety.
Okay. Regarding COVID, this is still very new to all of us, including the scientists. I mean, you hear these national directors of the FDA and the CDC and so forth, they change their ideas about COVID every other week. I mean, we're still learning about this virus. My wife and I and daughter were all vaccinated twice, and we got the COVID. And my wife and I and our daughter had no symptoms of it. My wife found out, she went to get her blood sugar test, and she said, my throat's been sore all night. She, our doctor said, let's get you a COVID test because of your other circumstances. So they got the COVID test, and we tested positive. So we got an antibody infusion the day after we all tested positive. We suffered no real damaging effect because of the immunities, I mean, the inoculations we got, I guess. But this is all new to all of us. As far as the school goes, I would have to better look at statistics from grade schools versus high schools and so forth, and find out how communicable these diseases are with our grade schools and so forth. A lot of the proclivity schools don't wear masks today, and yet we do. I'd like to find out what the rate of illness is in the different school levels, and then make a decision better on whether they have to wear masks or not, because I think it's very difficult for kids K through six to be wearing a mask all day long. I think the high school students can cope with it a little better. But I'd have to find out a lot more about it before I give a better opinion on that. Thank you, ma'am.
Great, thank you. Mr. Washington Childs?
I would like to start by commending the Winton Woods District for implementing a mask policy and taking COVID seriously, because they've done a good job to this point. I think I have a little unique perspective on this question, because with my personal experience with COVID, both of my in-laws who live in London, England, both tested positive for COVID, and both of my parents tested positive for COVID. And luckily, they all survived, and they're all vaccinated now. But I know firsthand the dangers of COVID. But I know firsthand the dangers of COVID. Moreover, I lived in New York City during the height of the pandemic, and I was there when 1,000 people were dying in Manhattan, and 1,000 people were dying in New Jersey, which I lived in, on a daily basis. As a matter of fact, the first person to catch COVID was in my office in the New York City Law Department, and they traced it back to our office. And luckily, I didn't catch it, but that was when we didn't know what was going on and didn't know exactly how it was spread. But what I can say is, the masks work, and the vaccines work. And because of the mask and the vaccination requirements within New York City, the city was fortunately able to recover, and is doing pretty well to this day. So I believe that moving forward, we need to trust the science, we need to continue with the mask mandate, and we need to make sure that science evolves over time. We need to evolve with the science. I believe that any parent that has a concern, I don't want to get too legal, but in the schools, the school is in what they call loco parentis during the school day. As long kids, as long as kids are under the control of the school district, the school district basically serves as the de facto parent to the school, to the, to the children while they're in the school, which means that the school needs to do whatever it takes to be in the best interest of the child, and that includes their safety. So, since we know the dangers of COVID, we need to make sure we take every precaution against it, not only for the students, but for the staff and the administration, and the teachers that are working within the district. And I believe the district, I don't know if they have this or not, since I'm not on the board as of yet, but needs to have like a backup plan if things, which hopefully doesn't happen, but which I may anticipate happening in the summer, in the wintertime, start to get out of hand with a new outbreak, because people start gathering indoors. There should be a backup plan with a virtual recourse, if necessary.
Great, thank you so much. Ms. Bryant?
Thank you so much. I think all of the other candidates have mentioned sanitizing, disinfecting, wearing masks, social distancing, all of the things we know that can keep people safe from COVID. The one thing no one has mentioned is, how do we do, how do you keep people safe psychologically? One of the impacts of COVID and the pandemic is social isolation. So as the schools and the world shut down, students were at home. How do you transition that? How do you transition them back into gathering with people, or social distancing, or wearing a mask, not being able to hug or touch? So I think we need to think about not just keeping people physically safe from the virus, but also giving them psychological support, and having school counselors available to talk through students who may now have anxiety, because they had to go home and couldn't see their loved ones for a year, or being back at school wearing a mask, and how that may make them feel. So thank you.
Thank you. That brings us down. Can you believe, we have done those questions, and we are down to the end already of an entire hour, almost. Thank you for participating. Those of you at home who emailed me questions, to be honest, I think we have more questions in front of us than we can get to. I'm so thrilled that we took a minute at the beginning for you all to share a way to find out more about you, so that if we didn't get your question, make sure you take advantage of that information that they shared earlier in the program. Thank you for joining us this evening here in the studio. That means you are willing to be part of the process of helping people make an informed vote on November 2nd. I want to thank you, the viewers, for joining us as well, because that means, if you're watching this program, that you are intentionally planning to make sure you know the most you can about the candidates on your ballot. If you need more information before you vote in the upcoming election, you can watch all of our election forums. All of our programs are online at www.waycross.tv. You can also go to the Hamilton County Board of Elections website, and make sure that you are registered, and then you can look at a sample ballot, and you can find out where your voting location is. That is votehamiltoncountiohio.gov. You see that address right there on the screen? Go there to get all that information. Registration to vote in this election ended on October 4th, but early voting has already begun. I'm Dana Gagnon, Government Programming Coordinator at Waycross Community Media, and I will see you at the polls on November 2nd.